Those things are dangerous.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dustin Swier.
Father, Hesden, pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roca.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Margaret Lewis. Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment. It's a time that I ask you to put your phone on silent or vibrate. Uh, there's no back and forth. You just comment, and you have three minutes. So, do we have any?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Uh, Mr. Richard Phillips for Agenda Item 4A.
Okay, cool.
Thank you for giving me your attention. It seems like a silly thing for me to be even questioning. A professional who is asking for a little bit more help because he didn't feel he was able to do it properly. If I recall, that was what this particular item's about. Am I correct?
4A?
4A?
No, not 4A. It must be 5A.
Yeah. 5A.
Yeah, you must want to talk about 5A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, 5A.
5A. If you remember.
Motion to amend. No, I'm picking. Go ahead.
If you recall, I worked many years in the private sector, which is a profit-seeking sector, and eleven years in the public service. I tend to transfer the thinking of the private sector, which, we use feature benefit or cost and benefit analysis. So, if you're faced with two alternatives, one of them pays 50% return, the other 40, you would obviously go with the 50. Outside of that, sometimes it's a lose-lose, and you make your decision the least you're gonna lose rather than making any money. Uh, I look at a workman's comp as somebody, a claim. Somebody saying they got hurt on a job, and they were denied. So, it turns into an adversarial situation. My attitude is, we're spending taxpayer money. If we settle, and I don't know any of the details, I have no idea what this case is about, but just generally, if you settle, you have a set amount of payout. And, and it's in writing. It's a contract. If you fight it, and have to even add additional expense outside of the normal city expense, uh, you're not only standing to lose in court and have to pay his par- you know, his attorney, um, you may end up with a much worse situation than if you compromise. I had a friend in Jefferson Parish face the exact same thing. They were denied. They had a lot of trouble even finding representation, ended up with a pro bono. And it was, never went to court. They sat down, and they hashed out a compromise. Maybe that's what we're trying to do here. I don't know. All I know is taxpayer money is either going to be done with a compromise before or after it's litigated. And, uh, I pay taxes, so it's my money that I'm looking out for to minimize. I don't mean to belittle anybody sitting here as far as making decisions or how professional they are. I applaud somebody who says, "I need help." That tells me they understand that they need a better person or somebody more knowledgeable to help them. And if I understand what was required in this particular, um, resolution, it is to throw more resources at a problem. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes of July 5th, 2023, which published on July 13th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on our minutes from July 5th? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 3A.
Ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between Iberia Parish Government and the City of New Iberia related to possession of the former Iberia Parish Tourist Commission building on the New Iberia Pepperplex grounds.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank y'all. 3B.
Special Ordinance number 2022-2023-27, Amendment number 26, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for wastewater screen replacement.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Broussard. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and Councilman David Broussard. Thank y'all. Now we move on to 4A.
Ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between Iberia Parish Government and the City of New Iberia related to possession of the former Iberia Parish Tourist Commission building on the New Iberia Pepperplex grounds.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
I do have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, the last time we talked about this, um, I asked whether or not, uh, the building needed some work. You said that it's probably gonna be some work that needs to be done on that building. Um, so, I guess my question is, are we able to pay for those repairs within the economic district's budget?
Yeah, well, we could use TIF district money, 'cause you remember, we dissolved the line between, at one time, the Pepperplex wasn't in the TIF district.
Right.
We included it. So, if we needed to go that route, we, we would be able to. You know, we're looking for other funding, and it's not an immediate need. The building functions right now. It's ugly, but it functions. So, you know, it does need some work. So, I think at some point, if we don't get a grant, or if, uh, the capital outlay dollars go in another direction, a bigger project, that is something we could do.
Okay, all right. So, we don't have to spend money out of the general fund to get this fixed?
I don't think so. No. I mean, if I exhausted all of the efforts, I might come to do that, but I actually would come for other things for the Pepperplex more important. So, it wouldn't be this building.
Okay, well, hopefully, at some point, we're gonna start making some money, and we pay for ourselves, right?
We, we will, but I'll tell you that we have a little ways to go of, of items that we have to do to really host those tournaments. But we're gonna get there. I, I, that's, that's the plan.
All right.
Yes, sir. You had your hand up.
Did you ask a question?
Okay, good.
Got the answer. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. 4B.
Special Ordinance number 2022-2023-27, Amendment number 26, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for wastewater screen replacement.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Ledbetter. Deidre Ledbetter.
She, I think she had it. And if she did, then I gave it to her.
Uh, any discussion? No discussion?
This is the capital outlay money.
Uh, this is money that we moved, that we, uh, from capital outlay, that in the last meeting, we introduced it to move so that we have enough to, you know, get this project going.
Right. Okay.
No discussion? Then please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Appreciate that. Very much needed. Item 5A.
Resolution number 23-94, authorizing the City of New Iberia to retain Attorney Robert C. Vines to represent the city in the fire and police civil service in an appeal filed by Orlando Matthews, and further authorizing the mayor to sign a retainer agreement with him, providing for billing at $175 per hour plus out-of-pocket expenses.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, I'm not sure, you know, what the, um, what the appeal is.
One, one second. Uh, I do wanna acknowledge that, uh, 'cause he wasn't here, couldn't make it last time, that, uh, Rob Vines is here. I just wanted to acknowledge that he was here.
Okay.
I might be able to head off some of these questions. 'Cause I'm the one who asked for this.
Okay, well, let me, let me, let me, let me ask my questions, 'cause I wanna make sure that I don't forget my questions. So, the first thing is, is what's the budget for this matter? Because we are asking to sign an agreement for $175 an hour plus out-of-pocket expenses, but most matters, we should have some sort of budget, 'cause how long is this gonna go on? I mean, how much money are we gonna spend to fight an employee over something? Again, I don't know the details, but I just wanna, I feel like we need to have a budget on this matter so that we know what's the cap. At what point are we saying we're not gonna go any further with this? 'Cause this is open-ended. This is, you know, if it takes a year, it's $175 an hour in expenses for a year. It could be $300,000. I just need a, I need a budget.
Why don't we get through the Civil Service Board meeting, hearing that's coming? Okay? 'Cause that's the first step. If, if they don't, if they don't hear it, well, I think we're done.
Okay, but if they do.
If they do, I, I have to defend the city, and I'm gonna spend whatever it takes to defend the policies and procedures of our police department and the actions that we took in relieving this employee of their duty.
Okay, I guess.
So, it's, it's an important issue.
No, I, I grant it. I do.
Has a lot of ramifications.
I, I, I understand that, but this is also taxpayer money.
It is.
And so, we just wanna make sure, I mean, I would've preferred to have a, some sort of budget associated with this, just, 'cause this feels open-ended. This feels like if we say yes today, I don't know, this could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're, we're leaving the door open for that, and I'm not sure that I'm ready to do that. Does that make any sense?
Understand. And as my city attorney says all the time, 'cause I'm picking on him, he's going operated. And I don't have a, you know, Jeff takes as much as Jeff takes, as many things as we have. It's hard to place a value, you don't know where a hearing's gonna go, or where a legal matter, I can't predict where a legal matter's gonna go. So, it's kinda hard to say, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll stop at this point or that point.
No, but I used to work for a law firm, and the one thing I know is that you can put a budget to a matter, because you have other cases that have some sort of, you know, you got press, you can see about how much time it's gonna take just from a comparison of the other cases. And I don't know if, if this has been submitted to us or not.
Yeah.
But I feel like we need, I need more information than nobody else does.
Well, in five years, I haven't had a case like this. I mean, the PD's been back for five years as of July 4th. I haven't had a case like this in five.
And I'm, I don't expect you to have the budget, I'm, I mean, the attorneys, but I'm just.
I understand.
Again.
Okay.
That was my first question. Okay.
Okay.
I bill the city by the hour. There's no budget.
Yeah.
Um, and I've handled a number of matters that have been contested in District Court and before the boards. No budget. We've never had a budget. He would bill on the same basis that I bill.
But you're a city attorney.
Same thing. Fine, but I bill by the hour.
Agreed.
I don't have a salary. There is no budget for my department. The, the expenses are allocated to different, um, departments, but there is no budget for anything like this. And I, we've never had a budget on a contested matter. I don't know. I've done this 17 years.
Okay, well, like I said, I mean, I worked for a law firm for 10 years, and I know that we would always submit budgets for a matter, and I guess I'm, I'm surprised, maybe I didn't understand that about, um, I knew you bill by the hour. I guess, I just feel like this is something different outside. This is not what Jeff normally does for us, and it just makes me a little concerned that we don't have some idea of what we are setting ourselves up for. I, I trust your judgment when you say that this is an important issue that we need to fight, because I'm, I'm not in the know on what happened, and it's an employee issue. I wouldn't expect us to air that in the public.
I can't.
Right. So, but my thing is, is that, just for me, um, I'm just concerned that we don't have some sort of budget around this matter. I mean, I'd like to know what we expect to spend. That, that was my big question.
You had?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Did you have your hand up?
I think, I think, um, you know, Jeff brings up a great point, but Deidre, DeeDee, I think, uh, this, it's a right to be concerned with a budget, but I think as a representative of the people. What?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I said, I think as a representative of the people, I think it's our job to protect and serve the people. And we have an issue in front of us that we need to make sure we're definitely protecting the people, and by high representation at whatever cost, like Freddie said, to represent us, i- it is very important, because it's, we protecting taxpayers' dollars also, and it is taxpayers', but we are protecting them. So, we need to do our due diligence when we do this and make sure that, that we have the right representation. And like Jeff said, we never had a budget with a city attorney, so I wouldn't expect to have to create a budget in this one. But, uh, you know, it is, it is a legitimate question, but, uh, I think that we're gonna get the right representation, whatever we hire, and I think it's gonna be, whatever it does cost us, I think we're protecting the public.
And who had their hand, you had your hand up next?
Yes, I did.
Trying to keep up.
My question is, how did we come to choose, um, this particular attorney to represent, to help you out?
Let me, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Explain the reason for this, because this is something I asked for. Um, I called Freddie on a Friday morning, I think it was, and I said, "Look, we need to meet about the, the workload." I said, "I need some help." My billing has probably doubled over the last few years to where it is now, because we have so many things going on. Um, and I said, "I just need some help getting some of this stuff done." And if you wanna read my bill, my bills are public record. Anybody can look at it and can see what I do all day. Um, and of course, I work for a lot of other people, too. But, I said, "I need some help on some of this kinda stuff," so we started talking about this. And I pointed out, this particular appeal is something that might be good to get some help with. This is a matter that involves police procedures and prosecution procedures and evidence procedures and a lot of real-life criminal cases. Um, my practice is, I've dealt with police matters before. We've done well with the Civil Service Board in the past and with, with both boards. But, this is, this is gonna involve, uh, a requirement that someone know prosecution procedures and police procedures. So, I said, "This would be a good one to get some help with." So, we started talking about it. Uh, what Mr. Vines has is a lot of experience as a prosecutor, so he knows how the cases are put together, the nuts and bolts. He's worked with our law enforcement officers for many years. He's got on-the-ground experience with the practical questions that come up. He's not now a prosecutor, 'cause I didn't want someone who was involved in current cases, because that would be a mess. But this does involve, uh, some sensitive matters. We've already been asked for lots of information from, well, we've asked, we've been asked for information, and the requests have come from defense counsel, from crim- criminal defendants, who are all over this case. So, we need to be very careful that we present this case to the board in a way that makes sense, in a way that explains to them how this affects real law enforcement and real prosecution. And we need to do it in a way that does not jeopardize ongoing prosecutions that we have right now. So, this is, this is a pretty technical thing. Now, Mr. Vines, I thought, would be the best choice for this kinda work. There aren't a lot of people who have that kind of experience, who are not now involved in, um, some of these matters. Uh, so, I, I don't think, I can think of anybody who would be, who would better represent the city than Mr. Vines. Now, I told him when the first conversation, I said, "Look, you can't charge more than I do." And, you know, he agreed to that.
That's funny.
And I charge other people more than I charge y'all. But, um, you know, so I told him, I said, you know, "This is the deal. You would come in, you'd step in, you would do what I would do." You know, I work for, and that's the contract that I have with the city. An hourly fee plus out-of-pocket expenses, and those are, are minor. We would have a retain, retainer agreement with Mr. Vines, and the retainer agreement would, you know, always allow the city to, uh, terminate the relationship or Mr. Vines to terminate the relationship. So, you know, we could keep an eye on that and see how it goes. This is a disciplinary matter that we thought was necessary. The mayor's already made the decision to discipline the officer. And, uh, now there's an appeal filed in response. We're not sure, you know, where this is gonna go, because this appeal is not something that we did. It's not something that we asked for. Now, you know, we could make this through the civil service process and stop it before it goes to District Court if it goes on appeal. That would limit the cost, you know, but then what are you gonna do? You gonna give up at that point? So, um, I think if I were doing this kind of work, it would be on a similar basis, hourly plus out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, I think Mr. Vines can probably best represent the city in this matter. This is a serious matter. The employee has an attorney who's a former police officer. He represents a lot of officers in New Orleans. Uh, he'll be well-represented, and I think we need to be well-represented. And this is a matter that involves a lot of criminal cases, and it's a serious thing.
So.
Uh, that's my, my request is, get me to help and be patient when I don't get your work done, because I've got, I'm, really, I got lots of stuff I'm doing.
So, my question.
And the second thing is, I think this guy's the best guy for the job.
Did we look at anybody else?
I thought about several other people.
And?
And he's the best that I could think of. And we don't have, we don't have time to shop this thing.
Next week, huh?
I mean, it's coming up.
I'm finished.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other? Yes, sir. Councilman Broussard.
I think, uh, coming out the district attorney's office, I feel safe with, uh, Mr. Vines. Just for that matter, you know, coming out of the district attorney's office, you must have a bunch of cases at your handle. So, I feel safe with that on your page. You know, Mr. Jeff.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Wait, let me just ask first. Did anybody else not tap the floor have a comment? No comments? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, I don't know Mr. Vines, you know. Uh, the only thing I know about him is the case he was involved in with Judge Lori Landry, because I was here, but prior to that, I don't know him. However, I will say that Mr. Vines representing the City of New Iberia, after that kind of issue, I'm sure that some of the people in my district will have a problem with that, because they feel like, um, he unjustly accused her of, or asked for her to be recused from, uh, 300 cases, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, you know, that left a really poor taste in people's mouths about what they felt like, or how they felt like Mr. Vines felt about the community. Because basically, basically what she was saying is that they were offering plea deals for, uh, white defendants that were more favorable than the black defendants. And so, this is gonna come up again in our, in my community, in my district, in some of my constituents. So, again, I, I'm probably more concerned that we're spinning, we don't know how much we're gonna spend on this. I do think that we have to consider, um, Mr. Mr. Vines' reputation, and we need to make sure that this is the right person to represent the city. I mean, because this is a big deal, especially for the people in the African-American community. Judge Lori was, you know, one of our first judges, and so, that's a big deal. So, I just wanna say.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, um, in the African-American community, uh, Mr. Vines is not, um, favorite. He's not favorite. And, um, it, to me, it's just a bad look for the City of New Iberia, especially in a case where it is an African-American that's doing the appeal. So, it's, I think that it may leave a, a bad taste in, in our community, um, by looking at it that way. You know, and I just have some concerns about that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 5B.
Resolution number 23-113, approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled City Park Improvements, Phase 1 Pool House Demo, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and we have David Allen here to talk to us about.
Good evening. So, um, this is the results of the pool house demo.
Empty.
Sort of the opposite of most of our projects. There's actually nothing there, except a new fence where the pool house was. Uh, the ground has.
I feel like we oughta have a moment of silence or something. For the place where I grew up.
Yeah. I think there were some artifacts recovered, too. Might've been some artifacts recovered from that, uh, building, I'm sure.
Little pins.
Yeah. Pins, maybe.
I did scoff a few baskets. 'Cause you take the pins and put your stuff in the basket. I didn't, couldn't find the pins, but I did scoff a few baskets.
Did anybody get any of those from Westin when they closed that pool?
I was wondering what happened to those, too. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I didn't live here, so I don't know.
Yeah.
At least I know.
So, this is, uh, Phase 1 is complete. We're asking for substantial completion on the contractors and all their work. They've actually gone in and surveyed out a bunch of utility lines, and we were able to identify a lot of them in that area, and we gave them to the Parks Department, so they have a, a map of what's going on on that site. Um, so, it's kind of ready for the next phase of the project, which will be the skate park.
Okay.
Yes. Councilman Swier.
I support the skate park 100%. I just wanna let, you know, the public know that. I brought it up before.
A plaque's coming.
Yeah.
No, we, we would.
Something there to just, uh.
We would like to tell that history. I mean, so many people were part of that for so many years, and I only stopped you 'cause you talked to me about it. I, I think it, it resonated. I do think we should put some, a little historic plaque.
In both ones.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed has a little plaque design that I love, that we are actually working behind the scenes to do some plaques in her district and other districts. So, that has become the little, if I can't get a state plaque for something, that's gonna be the design of the city plaque. So, I really got one peg for you or for us. I, I do think we should do that and tell that story, and we should probably do the same thing in the Westin and tell the story there.
Exactly.
So, but I, I, it's coming. I really want to do that, and I have put some of these plaques in next year's budget, uh, to try to make that happen. I think that the more we tell our stories, the more we connect with our community and our history, you know, the better off we'll.
Sounds good.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, I do, the, the plaque idea is, is.
Just keep it in there.
Is good. Okay. Cool. Any other comments or questions?
It looks good.
Yeah, blank.
Yeah.
A blank canvas. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. And can you just, 'cause it is kinda related, okay? When you do away with something and you bring something else, can you just give us a quick little blip of kinda how you think the skate park's gonna go?
So, um, we have hired a professional skateboard, uh, skate park designer out of Seattle. We interviewed about 12 different companies all around the country, all professionals. They were top-notch people. And this company was the best fit.
Question.
They have done similar projects. Um, so, we hired them to do the design for the project. We will have a different company actually construct it. They will bid it, and so, they'll have to, you know, go through the same process all the other contractors go through. But, coming up on August 2nd, we're gonna have a community input meeting. They're coming down from Seattle. They're gonna basically interview the kids and the skaters and bikers and figure out what they want for their park, and not just an idea they're gonna come up with, you know, really get their, their hands in it, so the community feels like they own the park, too.
Okay.
So, it's a, kind of an unorthodox approach, um, for sporting facilities, but it's one that the skate community really embraces, and they really like it when the, the cities do that. So, that's the first step. They're gonna come up with a design. We'll show the design probably at a council meeting. And then, uh, from there, they'll help develop some construction documents we'll use for bidding, and then we'll get a contractor, like I said, to bid it and build it. It's gonna be a lengthy process. It's just not many people that can build these things, so we have to kinda wait for them to be available, and, um, you know, it takes a while. So, we're, we're thinking of going out to bid around the end of the year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
No, I just, just gonna reiterate, David, and I saw that, that listing on, I think, a social media site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty creative. I said, you know, what better way, and we just talking about taxpayers' dollars, what better way to get the tax- I said, you know, what better way, and we just talking about taxpayers' dollars, what better way to get the taxpayers involved in their project? I mean, it, it, it just, I think it's a different approach, but it's a creative approach, and I think you can get positive results out of it. Not say it works for anything, but I think it's gonna work, it's gonna be, it's gonna work for this project and get some, some, some things that we sure aren't aware of what's needed, and I sure, you know, like me, don't ask me what goes in the skate park, but these, these people really do, and I think that's gonna be a, a great, a great advantage to the, to the city.
Absolutely. They have a survey out online, and of course, when we have our meeting, that'll be, you know, more, uh, face-to-face conversations. And to put in, uh, a little context, whenever they do these park designs, they do like to throw in some localness to the park. And being that it is a pool, a swimming pool, and there probably will be bowl or pool-like elements in the skate park, I can definitely think that they're gonna have some remnants of the actual pool itself. So, you might see some little things that are like, oh yeah, that looks like a, a swimming pool element, you know? Just a, a little, you know, way to make it tie together.
Yes, ma'am.
They're gonna reach out to kids across the city, right?
It is.
It's open.
There, there might be some kids even outside of the city, because that's the skate community. It is a regional.
We're holding at the meeting, building up in the front, and it's open to the public, it's open to everybody, we're putting on social media, and I, I want the whole community to come out.
Okay. Can we even announce, well, I don't know, is it before school starts?
August 2nd.
Oh, yes, before school starts.
Yeah, at 6 o'clock, so it's kind of in the evening when parents are back, and if they need rides and things like that, so, it's a pretty central location.
Help me get the word out, I mean, you know, we do, I want to include the whole community and get as much input as we can. The more input we get, the better it's gonna be.
Yeah, cause I mean, there's no skating rink or anything, we need to get kids across the city involved in this, and this is gonna be a big deal, so.
It is, it is. And one more thing, and then I'll quit advertising, but we did get $300,000 to do the architecture for a new pool, because when you're crashing something again, I like to tell people what you're replacing it and where it's coming. Uh, the new pool will have an Admiral Dahl address, so that's kind of uptown. Uh, it will be where the, uh, Dog Pound and the Sewer Plant were on Admiral Dahl, centrally located, already talking to the high schools so that they can do swim meets there. Our first design meeting, I've already talked to David about that, will be with the schools to make sure that it meets the criteria for all the schools to be able to use it. That way we know it's gonna have immediate impact, and anything, as we're doing on some other stuff, anything you do, we all, we all know that, that you can plug it with the school board, that's all our kids. So, that's gonna give us the opportunity to know that we're building a pool, it won't be cheap, but the state funded the architecture, so we feel confident next year they'll fund the pool, uh, cause they don't normally give you the money and quit on you. So, the good thing is, you know, partnering with the schools, as well as an open public pool, is gonna do a lot to let it have an immediate impact. So, just wanted to put that out there, cause like I said, I, I, you know, when you crash something, you, you gotta know what you're replacing it with.
And being a former swimmer, it'd be nice if we had some swim lanes in there, so we could swim at night. That'd be cool.
Cool. All right, anybody else on this issue? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, five C.
Resolution number 23 dash 114, approving change order number one for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled West End Park Community Center Space Improvements for Boys and Girls Club, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion.
So, I brought Tim Ricky Goslin, and Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed. David?
All right, so this is the Boys and Girls Club project. We are nearing the end of the project, and so we're getting inspections done, and we, uh, had an inspection where they found that we needed to install a grease trap in the concession area. We have a three-compartment sink, we added a new one, stainless steel, it's nice, um, but we have to put the grease trap under it, and we have to tie it into the plumbing, which is all in CMU, so it's a bit more intricate and involved. So, this is a change order to install that grease trap into the plumbing modifications.
Excuse me, David, is there, is this gonna be like a kitchen? Is it gonna be?
It's the old concession area at the teen side, and so they're gonna do snacks, I mean, they're not really cooking.
Right, so it's not gonna be an area where they can cook?
No, they, they're not.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Warming elements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Things, rice cookers, but no.
Think of a concession stand, not a kitchen, you know?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
The code we fell under is that we had to have a hand wash sink, a three-compartment sink, uh, and this grease trap.
Right.
So, we got, the, the code got a little more involved than we thought.
Yeah.
Right.
It could be then washing, you know, cheese or something, that causes clogs in the sewer system, so it's a way to trap all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, keep it out of Vince's system. I mean, I mean Craig's system. Very good. Anybody else? Then I.
Oh, I do have one, sorry.
Yes, ma'am, go, that's why we're here.
Are we under budget in this project?
Uh, yeah, we're about 180, so actually with this change order, it's still under budget.
Okay, good, all right.
Allocated budget.
And then remember, I'm keeping track, and we will reallocate at the end, you know, like we did at the beginning. We came up with a plan, we followed our master plan, we came up with projects. On all of these, you know, we're doing pretty good on most of them and keeping track, and at the end, we will come back and do a little bit more.
Okay, sounds good.
And I am trying to keep the money as much as I can, unless it's some great idea that we all agree on. I'm trying to keep the money where we allocated it. In other words, if it was in the West End, then I would like to, I'm telling you where I'm gonna move it if you let me. I'm gonna move everything I can to Park Elementary, because we are having some vandalism issues, we are, we just getting off the ground with that project, and I feel like I'm going backwards. So, any money that's left on these projects, I would like to enhance that, which is part of the park, which enhances, you know, just more of what we're trying to do. But I will try to keep it in the pot that we originally, you know, put it in. I think that's the fair thing to do. Anybody else? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering why two lights stay on.
Bobby.
Resolution number 23 dash 115, awarding contract to Stevens TPS Incorporated for the steel tank blasting and painting project at the Sucrose Drive wastewater treatment plant, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Goslin, and a second by Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one, is Stevens TPS, is that a local company?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Wanna come up, Vince? I know, we'll come up anyway, Vince. Greg, you wanna come up?
They are from Mississippi.
Okay.
But they are working locally right now.
Okay, so, uh, does this not concern you that they are so much lower than the other two bids? I mean.
Absolutely not.
You sure?
It's apples to apples though, yeah.
It's apples to apples.
It's very much, yeah. Same paint, everybody, same blasting, uh, code, uh, you know, it, it is what it is. And when he, the other vendors actually said, oh, I'm bidding against him, they were disappointed to hear that. So, um, uh, he's, he's working for Loco, uh, so he's got a proven track record with them, you know, we checked out the contractor. So, I'm, I'm not worried about the money on the table.
Okay, it just seemed like he's, I mean, $40,000 less than the highest bid, and 20-some thousand less than the second highest bid, or the middle one. That just seems.
It happens.
It, it, I.
Okay.
You can look at the size of the companies, right? Stevens is very small, uh, up to the big company in, in Baton Rouge that, that goes into industrial chemical plants, so, um, they were the highest bid.
Okay.
And, and the mom, I don't wanna call them mom and pops, but the smaller was the, the less expensive.
Okay.
Less overhead.
If you say, if you say so.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
I, I vetted it.
I trust your judgment.
The RFP, and so it's, it's apples.
Okay, cool.
I'll take the gamble.
I hope we don't have this conversation again, Vince. I'm just messing with him.
I, I know, it's all good. Anybody else? All right, then please vote your machines. Let's, let's take that, uh, good price before somebody changes their mind. Thank you very much. Uh, six A.
Introduction of ordinance number 2023 dash 18, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement for land application of processed municipal sludge by and between the city of New Iberia and Kirk D. Gilbo, and setting for public hearing on August 1st, 2023.
I need a motion, so move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Goslin, and I don't really know who had the second, well, Councilwoman Brooke Markat, I heard two at the same time.
Yeah.
Great, any discussion on this item?
No, I think I got my answers already.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right. Jimmy, come on up, now our. All of our property standards comes, and remember, these buildings, uh, I'm not sure of every one, but most of them are part of the grant that we're applying for, all of them, good. So, they're not contentious, it's not an adversarial situation. If we get the grant, people will be very happy because they want these things removed.
Right.
And that didn't happen too often, so I'm celebrating that every time we do it. So, we have a little system, Jimmy tells us about it, Jeff tells us about it, then we move on to the next one, and like I said, they move fairly quickly because nobody's, you know, nobody's mad. Jimmy? Good evening.
Good evening. You wanna do, go with the first one?
Oh, yeah, seven A.
129 and 129 and a half de la salle.
Okay, wait, let's let her read it first, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, so, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 23 dash 116, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at 129 and 129 and a half de la salle are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG clearance program grant application contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the city of New Iberia.
Great, do I have a motion?
So, move.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Goslin, and second by Councilman David Broussard. Jimmy?
All right, this house has its best deciding, I know that, but the roof's coming off, it's in bad shape, it's got a shed in the back, I've been getting complaints on it for years. Mice and rodents coming out of it.
Good. Jeff?
Are we talking about, is it two structures or one?
It's two structures.
Okay, and they're both coming down?
Yep.
Okay. This is owned by Trayton Incorporated, which is Newton Thompson.
Okay.
Local guy.
Yeah.
I've known him for years, um, and this is number 33 on the parade of homes.
Okay, thank you.
Successful, you forget to buy your ticket.
Seven B. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we didn't vote yet. Any comments or questions? Then please vote your machines. All right, thank you all. Seven B.
Resolution number 23 dash 117, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at 104 Perry Street are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG clearance program grant application contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dede Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Dej Lebret, thank you. Jimmy?
Okay, this is a building, the roof is coming off again. The floors inside are falling apart, and the person that owns it doesn't wanna put the money into it to fix it, so, it'd be a good candidate. He fixed the building to the right of it, if you, if you ever in that area, he really did a good job.
I kinda like this building, anyway.
Is that the one behind old Jody Reynolds?
Yeah. Across the, yeah, yeah, in the back of it.
Yeah.
All right.
Akim's Chinese.
Right.
Okay.
It's my kinda building. Any questions or comments? Jeff, let me call Jeff.
There were three, there are three buildings on this property, 102, 104, 106, and I think they'll, they'll only wanna get rid of the middle one, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's owned by a local, a local, uh, electrical company that bought it from a bank, and I guess got it back in foreclosure, so, but, um, yeah.
Okay.
And, and let me say that on all of these, I did the agreements on all 40 of them, or however many there were this weekend, and gave them to Laney, she's got a stack of papers about this big. But in that agreement, we have, um, one of the provisions is that we're not responsible for damages to vegetation and other constructions on the property, because we're gonna have big equipment in between some of these buildings that are already there, and, um, we just need to be protected for that, so, it's part of the deal.
Okay. Questions, comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right, seven C.
Resolution number 23 dash 118, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at 522 Copper Road are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG clearance program grant application contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
That's good, take it.
Motion by Councilwoman Dej Lebret, and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Goslin. Jimmy?
Yeah, I think this is a house that was damaged by the tornado in December, so.
That's Mr. Hawks.
There's three of them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, now his dog is. Good, thank you. Jeff?
Well, this was bought in 2007, so it's not, you know, it's not an old dilapidated structure, but Henry Joseph Hawks is the owner of record.
Nice question. Yes.
So, in this particular instance, who takes care of the other stuff besides the structure, so like the vehicle and the camper? So, we just go ahead and in there and tear it all out?
Well, we do the house, but we, we.
Yeah, we're not.
We're not doing the camper or the vehicle.
So.
That either comes back, we ask him to remove it while we're communicating and working with him, and hopefully he does, and then if he doesn't, it can be handled by the junk ordinance. One step at a time, you know?
You know.
Yes.
We could make a deal with these people, that we'll spend the money that we have available to do this work.
Yeah.
If they do some stuff also.
If you get rid of the car and the camera.
Yeah.
But I don't know who needs this demolition more, us or them.
I know, sometimes it's us. I'm not being ugly, sometimes it's us, people will walk away, and then all the neighborhood's impacted.
Yeah, cause you know, if we say we're not gonna tear it down unless you clean up the yard, and they say, well, never mind.
No, I'd go the other way.
We're not smarter ourselves, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an issue, yeah, because we, the grant does not cover junk cars.
No, I say we get all we can while we can.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, Jeff, on, on another note, hypothetically, if, if these go off a bid, and they are awarded, and the contractor shows up tearing out, and the property owner comes up and asks him to remove other structures on the property and pays for it, Kenny or Kenny?
He can come back.
I'm just asking, cause I know that's gonna come up, you know?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, that's a matter between the contractor and the landowner, and what we would like is, we'd like them to do our work first.
Yep, okay.
And get it finished, and then whatever they wanna do is fine.
Yeah, private business can take over.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, but yeah.
Yeah, but we, um, we wanna stay out, we wanna do, do our work and leave.
Yeah, cool.
So, one more, Chris.
Sure.
So hypothetically, when, when do you think we're gonna, this probably, if we get approved, go off a bid and start maybe moving some of these houses, do you think?
I, I have no idea.
Brand-new program with the state.
You gotta remember.
We have a consultant, but you know, you've got asbestos testing, you have, you know, it's a lot of steps.
Asbestos abatement.
I don't know that, and we don't know how fast the state's gonna be, you know? I know, I know, it's just, it's unknown for right now.
I took all the houses, I got estimates, a rough estimate, and it's at $540,000 with no asbestos abatement. I got the testing in it, but I don't have the abatement in it. So, we're gonna have.
And the max of the grant is 500,000. We were worried about making the minimum, if y'all remember, and because of all of y'all's hard work, everybody's turned houses in, everybody's hustled, we're now over the maximum.
Well, so, yeah, we, we have some we're not gonna get.
Yeah, and, and we do know that of the 540, some might fall out, that the homeowner doesn't do the title work, doesn't do, doesn't have clear title, can't get, uh, heirs or, you know.
We have, we have two or three that are tax sale purchases where, you know, we really can't get good title. And then we got several that are estates, so we don't know. I don't know what the schedule is for getting the money, there's a, there's a deadline at the end for spending it, right?
Laney had, you talking to our consultant, did he give you any kind of indication? When do we think the money would be available? And when do you think the show would start?
Uh, sometime after August 1st.
Cause that's our deadline, but I said, that's an answer, man, that's an answer.
She's good, huh?
That's a good answer. Yes, sir. Fill out the floor.
My question is, so, since we're getting to the half a million dollar threshold, do, as collectively, do we continue to look for properties, or do we put the brakes on and say, okay, we don't wanna tell somebody we will and we can't, right?
Well, we're gonna run out of time, we kinda think this is it. In other words, we're not gonna be able to add too many more with the paperwork, and Laney is now overloaded getting signatures, so I kinda think for this one, we done. You know, and you can't really keep up.
I'm not saying no, I mean, I could, I could look up some more stuff if I needed to, but we got 40 properties.
That's a lot.
And we got probably 35 or so that we think are live, you know, that we could probably do. You know, and have generated agreements for all those things, I mean, it's literally.
Oh, it's a stack.
170 pages of stuff, so, um, I'm not saying we can't do more, you know, but we're gonna have our hands full with this.
No, I'm just, I don't wanna go ask somebody and say, look.
No, I kinda think we good, and the ones that we think are gonna get thrown out will put us under the half million dollar threshold, and then everybody we promised something to will get.
Okay.
And I was really, you know, worried about that from the beginning, because you look like the Candy Man, and then if you.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
Candy, it's not good.
And, and we know, I mean, Jimmy's already mentioned, we, we know it's gonna cost more than we estimate, right?
Yeah.
Everything you build does, right?
Yeah. Let's forget it's like we got earlier. No, I'm picking. Anybody else? Any other questions or comments on this one?
So bank-owned, bank-owned cannot be used, right? Like, the grant can be used on a bank-owned home? I thought that was said previously.
Yeah.
I, I didn't say that. I don't know what the rules are. I hadn't heard that.
It's some extra complication, but I don't know if, I can't say it couldn't.
Okay, gotcha.
Do you have one?
Well, the lake side apartments. I don't know if you've heard about those. They're, it's like a four-plex. And it's in bad condition. Actually submitted it just for regular demolition, because I think it's in limbo right now being foreclosed on, according to the neighbors. There's a lot of activity around there with what appears to be banker people, is what they're describing them as.
Sent a letter to what's on the assess site to try to get them to come and secure it and board it, but the letter came back.
Well, yeah, if, if it's in that process between default and share of sale, it's going to be really difficult for us to get somebody who can agree to do that, because the bank doesn't own it until the share of sale.
Gotcha.
So it's probably, I don't know if this is, is under seizure or whatever. We got another one like that.
They don't have notices on it. I, I was there about a week ago. And it doesn't have any notices posted on it or anything.
Would that mean it's technically still owned by whoever the owner was, but we just have no way of getting in touch with them since the letter was sent back?
I, I, I don't know about this particular property. We have one property that is in foreclosure. And it's a national lender, and those people are impossible to reach. So really, you know, we have a couple of properties where we have a local lender, like some of the fourplexes in Southport. Local lender, local owner, the property is damaged. The lender's going to have to release their mortgage on the property to allow us to do this, and I think we can do that. But if you're dealing with a national lender, we don't even know, it's impossible to get these people to talk to you.
And we don't even know who we're dealing with at this point, because it seems like it's in the process of being switched over.
I think that one's going to be difficult.
Okay, I did send it in anyway, not for the grant, but just for demo, because it's in bad condition.
We're going to have to deal with it.
Yeah, it's pretty terrible, so.
But to find a person with authority who's willing to talk to us and sign a demolition agreement on a foreclosure property, that's going to be tough.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anything else on seven C? There are nothing. Please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Seven D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one nineteen, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at eleven oh three SIS are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program Grant Application, contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Man, that was like in unison. Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Dej Leibetter. Thank y'all. Jimmy?
Yeah, this house is in terrible shape.
I've been rehearsing.
The siding, the siding's all falling off, the windows are boarded, but they're probably broken underneath it. It's a mess.
Yeah, it looks like the door's open in the back.
Yeah, the door's kicked in or whatever.
I, I think this one's going to be an estate. It was acquired in nineteen sixty-five. I mean, we have the agreement, but I think it's going to be a difficult one.
Okay.
I mean, I think we ought to approve it, but.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we'll come together. Questions, comments? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Seven E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one twenty, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at three oh one Colgan are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program Grant Application, contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and I don't know who got the second, so I'm going to say it was Councilwoman Dej Leibetter. I think it was. Good. Discussion on, wait, Jimmy?
Yeah.
It's gone.
Well, yeah, ain't much to discuss.
It's just somebody started something and did.
Yeah, no, it's half-blown up. Jeff?
Yeah, the, um, let's see. This looks like mother and daughter. We have two people on the agreement. See what we can do. I don't know why we shouldn't approve it.
Okay.
Oh, you know what?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, this is the same lady that I asked, I had you to pick up. You remember I asked you to help pick up the stuff when they tore down the trailer?
And I did.
Yeah, exactly. This is the same family.
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one twenty-one, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at six thirty-two Week Street are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program Grant Application, contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the City of New Iberia.
That building needs to be torn down?
I need a motion.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Mayor Tom Rick Gonsal. Now we can have some discussion. Jimmy, the back really messed up?
Is the back?
Yeah.
I got to pick. It's a metal shed.
The front of it really did look bad.
The people used to raise parakeets in there. And the wall, if you notice the wall in the front, if I'm, the front wall has half brick. I think the water leaked behind the brick, and I think on the inside it's getting bad.
Is there mold growing in there? Or you haven't been inside?
I haven't been inside.
Got something against parakeets? No.
No, no, I just know the family. I grew up across the street.
Yeah, I'm picking on you. Okay, good. Jeff?
Yeah, I think the, I think this was a donation from the Norris family.
To the Corvilles?
To the Corvilles. Uh, and it was a donation to their long-term tenants.
Yeah.
But, so I don't know, I don't know more, more story than that. It was done in twenty twenty, so, you know, I think the people are still around. If they've requested that it be demolished.
Questions, comments? None? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven G.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one twenty-two, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at six oh one and a half Juarez Street are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program Grant Application, contingent upon owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Jimmy?
Yep, this one.
Not much to say.
Yeah, it's in bad shape.
Okay. Okay, Jeff?
Looks like a single owner, acquired from family, so.
Yeah, success.
Looks workable.
Good. Any questions or comments? Can you, please vote your machines?
I had a question.
Oh, wait, yes, ma'am.
I guess how are we going to get in her backyard? Not us personally, obviously, because that's in the backyard, and it's fenced in.
But in the side, it's on the corner of Alameda, I think it's Alameda. They can get through, they might have to take part of the fence down.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, because, yeah, whenever I saw the address, I was like, wait, nothing's wrong with that house, because I passed out in there pretty often, and then I realized it was in the backyard.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, wait, so this is?
It's like a shed.
They had, it, at one point, they had an apartment with a separate meter back there.
Okay, so there's six oh one.
Is the house in the front?
And six oh one and a half. Okay, we just got to make sure on our agreement, we say six oh one and a half.
Yeah, yeah. We, we don't want to tear the wrong house down. That wouldn't be free, y'all.
I would think they would question if they pull up and see her house and say, are we really demolishing this? Because it's not in bad condition. But that in the back is.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Moving on to our last house, seven H.
A resolution declaring that the buildings or structures at twelve oh one Park Avenue are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and further authorizing its inclusion in the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program Grant Application, contingent upon property owner verification and execution of a demolition agreement with the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Mayor Tom Rick Gonsal, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, thank y'all. Jimmy?
The rear end is all open.
Yeah.
Looks like somebody started a remodel project and never got finished.
Yeah, okay. Jeff?
Looks like a single owner, so it looks doable.
Good, good. Questions, comments?
Glad to see us coming down.
Yes, ma'am. Please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. So this probably will conclude our parade of homes. You know, we'll do the paperwork, and Laney will be busy with a lot of signatures, and Jeff has been busy, and let's hope we pull this off. All right, next, item eight A.
Kevin's arring to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty twenty-two to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Well, before I forget, thanks to the council for helping with all the houses. I mean, it took a team effort to get farting. That, I appreciate that. All right, Kevin, what you got?
Well, we have the year-to-date budget to actuals for the period November first of twenty twenty-two through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So that's seven months in, which would put us at fifty-eight point three three percent of our budget. General fund, budgeted revenue of twenty-four point one million. Actual is fifteen million, putting us at sixty-two point oh eight percent of our revenue. Expenses, twenty-eight point eight million. Actual is fifteen point eight, putting us at fifty-four point eight percent of our expenses. Parks and Recreation, budgeted revenue one point six. Year-to-date is one point two, putting us at seventy-four point seventy-three percent of our revenue. Expenses of one point six, year-to-date eight hundred thousand, putting us at forty-nine point sixteen. And the reason for that is because there's the capital outlay projects, I say capital outlay, capital projects that, um, as time this was done, had not been completed.
Okay.
The nineteen sixty sales tax fund. Revenue, ten point four, year-to-date at six million, putting us at fifty-seven point four two percent of our revenue. Expenses, seventeen million, year-to-date nine point nine, putting us at fifty-eight point thirteen percent of our expenses. Police and Fireman Public Safety Fund, revenue of four point one, year-to-date two point three, putting us at fifty-seven point sixteen percent of our revenue. Expenses, budgeted four point one, year-to-date two point four, putting us at fifty-eight point twenty-six percent of our expenses. Highway fourteen TIF, revenue budgeted three hundred and seventy-nine, year-to-date two hundred and four, putting us at fifty-three point ninety-two. Expenses, five hundred and eleven thousand, actual is two hundred and ninety-three thousand, putting us at fifty-seven point four two percent of our expenses. Spanish Trail, TIF, revenue of twenty-four thousand, year-to-date is eighteen thousand, putting us at seventy-four point fifty-three percent of our revenue. Expenses, two hundred and thirteen, budgeted, actual one thirty-nine, putting us at sixty-five point thirty-two percent of our expenses. And the reason that's off is because we didn't really know how, you can't really budget the collection on where they're going to be charged. And, because that's up to the, um, school board.
Board.
Pepperplex TIF, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, budgeted, actuals four hundred and fifty-seven, putting us at sixty-three point twenty-seven percent. Expenses, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Revenue, actuals is four nineteen, putting us at fifty-five point thirty-one percent. Pepperplex, revenue, four million, budgeted, actual is two point eight, putting us at sixty-seven point eight five percent of our revenue. Majority of their revenue is reimbursement from the deferred revenue from the three million bond. We recognize it as the projects are done.
Okay.
And you'll see on the expenses, four point eight million expenses, year-to-date is three point three, putting us at seventy-five point thirty-one percent. Public Works Fund, revenue of three point six, year-to-date two point four, putting us at sixty-six point seventy-one percent. Expenses, three point five million, actuals one point six, putting us at forty-four point five. Garbage Fund, four point two million. Budgeted revenue, year-to-date is two point three million, putting us at fifty-four point forty-three percent of our revenue. Expenses are four point two, year-to-date is two point four, putting us at fifty-eight point five one percent. Section eight, revenue, one point four, actual is nine fifty-eight, putting us at sixty-seven point eight nine percent. And that supports what Fred has been saying, that Haley's been bringing in more and more families.
I'm telling you.
Section eight vouchers, expenses of one point four, budgeted, actual is nine thirty-three, putting us at sixty-seven point seven two percent of our expenses. Wastewater, ten million, budgeted, actual is six million, putting us at fifty-nine point four nine percent. Expenses, five point six, year-to-date three point five, putting us at sixty-three point sixty-three percent of our expenses. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
I knew you were waiting for a question.
Well, I mean, you know, that's why we're here. That's why we're here. I love it. Am I good? Good. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll move on to council's remarks, and tonight I'm going to start, it would be Dustin, I'll start with you. Councilwoman.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, let everybody know that we are still working on the cemetery. I know people are frustrated, but we are still trying to get that worked out. We're, I think, I think we're waiting on poison?
You can call me, I'm ready whenever y'all want.
Okay, so we're, we're ready? If you let me know when you could deliver it, and I'll make sure I'm available to get it, even if I have to take it to my house.
Excuse me, but I was supposed to bring it to the barber shop.
Okay, he's out of town.
Okay, just call me this week.
Okay, cool. And, um, I have some people lined up that are going to go out, and they're going to poison the grass, so we should be getting this thing under control soon. We're not going to go the whole summer with the graveyard looking like this. So, um, that's it for me.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Only thing, I have no neighborhood watch this month. We shall resume in August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we have Shudu in the audience. Shudu, thank you for your program. Anything you're doing is helping. Look like we see some help, so keep doing what you're doing, buddy. We appreciate it. All that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you have something? Just, just a reminder that, um, Lower Street is expected to be closed for another two days, and the city portion is closed. I talked to the Paris today about drain, that drainage replacement.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind my residents that, um, I know y'all talk about trash placement. At the last meeting, I wasn't here for. They're still placing it wrong. So three feet away from other objects is what Pelicans is asking, that you place your trash bin three feet away from mailbox, telephone pole, those sorts of things. It's on their website. Um, and also, don't put it too close to another bend. There are sofas and mattresses that end up perched up against a fence. They can't pick it up with the claw that way, so you have to make sure it's where the claw can grab it. Also speeding, speeding's still an issue, I guess, everywhere in town. Just be mindful of your speed. The kids are still out of school, and you don't want to hurt anybody. That's all I have.
Okay. I don't have anything tonight, so, uh, our next meeting is August the first. And if you want to, you can participate in our MS Stormwater Survey, and we still have properties for sale on Civic Source. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.